The city of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held October 16, 2018 at 6:00 PM. And if we could please have the deputy clerk take the role.
Councilmember Althouse.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Olinsky.
Here.
And Councilmember Pfeifer and Howagie are both absent.
Okay, very good. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Start with the council. Have you got anything to report tonight? Sure.
I attended the Northern, or the Arizona Arizona Council Area Agency on Aging Meeting. We have it quarterly. It's always a great meeting, gives us a lot of information about how we're able to serve our senior citizens. Unfortunately, I received some really disappointing news. At the last meeting, I had come before council and said that they were going to get their $6 million extra to feed everybody on the waiting lists throughout the Verde Valley. And that made it all the way to the governor's office and then the funding got pulled. So we were very, the whole $6 million was pulled. So we were very disappointed in that, but we'll still do what we can do. Met with, let me just speak. Met with an individual citizen named Karen Malillo. Hopefully I pronounced that right, Karen. She's, she's an animal rights advocate and interested in bringing something before the city council having to do with circuses, so we'll look for that in the future. And the best one is, I attended today the Northern, the Northern Arizona Professional Women's Group Annual Luncheon with the Make a Difference Awards. And we had 15 women that were honored there as nominees and all amazing women. They're the women that keep getting nominated for numerous awards throughout our communities in the Verde Valley and Northern Arizona itself. And the award was actually provided to Diane Jones. So, well deserved. She worked hard for it, but it was a really neat event and I was really, I think it's the closest we've got her to cry. She was right there. She was not expecting it. So it was a really neat event.
Good, thank you. Any other council members? Anything to report?
Just briefly, I attended Can Sedona, which is a local fundraiser modeled after the TV show Chopped. It was a really fun event that benefited several of our local charities, including Angie's House, which was one of the featured nonprofits. And another fun event is this Saturday. I don't know, I think some of us, maybe Councilmember Althouse and our city attorney may be attending the Manzanita Outreach Food Packing Event over at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds. Starts at 8 o'clock on Saturday. Last year we packed several hundred thousand meals. I forget the exact number, escapes me. But looking forward to a good turnout this year and to beating that number, packing more meals this year. So, if you'd like more information, they've got a lot of info on their Facebook page. You can just go to Manzanita Outreach on Facebook, or you can always message me if you have questions.
Great, thank you. Just briefly, last week Thursday, I was honored to mediate an event at the Yavapai College where Mayor Evans, Mayor Coral Evans came down from Flagstaff to update the community on her climate action and adaptation plan. Which is a pretty impressive plan that Flagstaff has undertaken to reduce their carbon emissions by, I believe, 80% by 2050. It's pretty, pretty impressive really, and they're, you know, they've got the whole thing laid out strategically and how they're going to get there. So it was neat to, to be there and help moderate that event. And many members of the community asked what Cottonwood is doing, so I got to share a little bit of information about, you know, what we have done in the past and it certainly encouraged us to do more. So anyway, I, I am interviewing next week Darcy Hitchcock, who's with the Sustainability Alliance. I think I updated council on that last time we spoke. But I hope to be, be bringing some ideas forward for council's consideration in the future. That's all I have. Deputy City Manager, do you have anything?
A few things here. Just a reminder that the transaction privilege tax increase goes into effect November 1st. That's an increase of .5%. The new rate will be at 3.5%. Rentals and mining are not affected. We've gotten a lot of calls on that. The annual budget process will begin by the end of this week. We'll be sending out goals and accomplishments to all the different departments for 2020, so you can start thinking about their goals for the, for the 2020. The community clubhouse AV system is going well, and if everything goes as planned, we are hoping to have some sort of a grand opening sometime in January of 2019. Wanted to note that we are limiting the speed in Old Town to 15 miles an hour during the Safe Trick or Treat Night. The event is here in Old Town Wednesday, October 34th from 5 to 7. Also, a reminder is that the 5th Annual Cottonwood Historic Home and Building Tour is happening on November 3rd from 10 to 3:00 PM. The event is hosted by the City of Cottonwood and the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission. They're still in need of volunteers. If you're interested, you don't have to know about, everything about the, the, the City of Cottonwood and all the historic homes. They have scripts for these. And please contact Michael Matthews at M.M.A.T.K.W. at gmail dot com if you'd like to volunteer. Also, at the request of Councilmember Ruben Howagie, Public Works Manager Robert Winnicky contacted ADOT to consider Cottonwood as a location for the five-year public hearing listing. They had, happened to have gotten a cancellation for the July 2019, and now Cottonwood is on their list, and we're hoping that they will pick us up as a public hearing, so the timing was just perfect. Utilities will be installing two large backup generators at Verde Santa Fe and at Wellsite 7-2. The current Verde, Verde Santa Fe generator will be repurposed at the Wellsite 2-2, 2-2, which supplies water to Verde Village 2, 4, and 5. And lastly, the municipal court received a $3,600 grant, filled the gap grant, to hire a part-time court clerk, so they're going to get a little bit of help there. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address your council? No? Okay. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes, regular meeting of October 2, 2018, and special meeting of October 9, 2018. There's nothing to add? All go ahead and move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving on then to unfinished business. We have two items under unfinished business. First item is ordinance number 644, amending Title 1, general provisions. Title 2, administration and personnel, and Title 3, revenue and finance of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an upgrade to our municipal code. It has been quite some time since we had actually had it upgraded. Our city manager Doug Bartosz has been working with staff to try to get this thing upgraded, and what you have before you is what has been discussed, seeing that this is the second reading. The code has also been compared to other local agencies to make sure that they were all about where we should be. With that being said, we, we'd like to go ahead and see if council will approve the, the changes.
Okay. Yeah, again, we've gone over this at length in previous meetings, so is there any other discussion from council on this?
No.
And do I, anyone from the public care to ask any questions? Make any comments? Do I hear a motion?
I don't, we don't.
This is the second, is this the second and final?
Second, second and final.
I'll do it. I move to approve ordinance number 644. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, Vice Mayor Allen seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Mayor Olinsky.
Yes.
And motion passed.
Okay. If we could please have deputy clerk read ordinance number 644 by title only?
Ordinance number 644, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Title 1, general provisions. Title 2, administration, personnel, and Title 3, revenue and finance of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next and last item under unfinished business is ordinance number 651, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood for two parcels of land approximately .82 acres located at 1010 South Main Street, southwest corner of State Route 89A and 260, to be reclassified from C2 heavy commercial and PUD/CS planned unit development commercial to PAD planned area development. Second and final reading. Evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Scott Ellis with Community Development has mentioned ordinance number 651, a rezone request from a proposed Starbucks drive-through coffee shop at the corner of State Route 89A and 260, 1010 South Main Street. There's two parcels now. The applicant's going to combine them into one totaling approximately .82 acres to rezone both to PAD. As you remember, at the last meeting, ADOT was here, representatives from ADOT to give you kind of an overview on their take on the traffic. The applicant is going to construct a right turn lane on southbound 260 to accommodate what ADOT needs, and that's all they're looking for on the traffic. Staff hasn't received any comments, questions, concerns, since it was previously presented to you. The applicant's here. If we have any additional questions, or I can answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
I don't.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions of the applicant?
No.
No. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak about this ordinance? No? Okay, well I feel like we had a, a good public hearing last, two weeks ago now. And we've certainly heard from many members of the public. I'm comfortable with, with moving forward if council is, if there's no further discussion.
Motion. I move to approve ordinance number 651.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, Councilmember Althouse seconded. If we could please have roll call vote?
Councilmember Althouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Mayor Olinsky.
Yes.
And motion passed.
Okay, very good. Please read resolution, excuse me, ordinance number 651 by title only?
Ordinance number 651, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for two parcels of land totaling approximately .82 acres located at 1010 South Main Street, southwest corner of State Routes 89A and 260, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C2 heavy commercial and PUD/CS planned unit development commercial. As approved per ordinance number 220 on January 19th, 1988, to PAD planned area development under a new master development.
Okay, very good, thanks. Thanks to the folks in the audience tonight in support of this, and thanks too to the applicant for being here tonight, and to you, Mr. Ellis. Thanks. Okay, we're moving on now to the consent agenda, and the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and they will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So tonight we have six items on the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read them. And if there's anyone in the audience tonight that would like to have an item pooled, please indicate so by raising your hand just as high as you can, so I'll see you. Item 1, change order with CNS engineers for additional construction administration services on Phase 2 of the Airport Apron Reconstruction Project. Item 2, approval of grant contract with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, contract number 29-11-001 for DUI Task Force Overtime. Item 3, approval of grant contract with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, contract number 2019-PTS-013 for selective traffic enforcement motorcycle. Item 4, approval of grant contract with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, contract number 2019-PTS-014 for selective traffic enforcement patrol. Item 5, designating EnviroGen Technologies as a sole source supplier for arsenic treatment media and associated hardware. And item 6, fair festival liquor license application submitted by Pillsbury Wine Company, Arizona Stronghold Vineyards, Burning Tree Cellars, Caduceus Cellars, Carlson Creek Vineyard, Page Springs Cellars, Chateau Tumbleweed, and Winery 101 for the walk-in on main event scheduled for November 10, 2018, in Old Town. Anyone want an item pooled from the consent agenda? Okay, members of the council want it pooled? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, and if we could have a roll call vote? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on then to new business, we have item 1, Resolution Number 2969 declaring that certain document titled International Property Maintenance Code 2012 Edition to be a public record. Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Steve Jackson with the Community Development, and as you all know, we recently adopted the 2012 building codes in their entirety, with the exception of the Property Maintenance Code. And somehow it got left out of the final version that we submitted for approval. And it's, it's vital to, to the code enforcement that we have this property maintenance code to use at our disposal. Currently, right now, we're working under the 1985 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and it's really dated. It would be nice to be able to bring that up to the, to the 2012 codes with, with everything else that we're doing. And so that we're, we're, I guess, asking council to consider doing that and adopting the 2012 Property Maintenance Code.
Can you, do you know if other communities in the area have, have adopted this as part of their adoption of the universal code in general?
Yes, I'm pretty certain that the surrounding communities with us are all pretty much on the 2012 codes and trying to stay with them. And they adopted the codes pretty much in their entirety too. They made a few more amendments in some different places, but they pretty much took the Property Maintenance Code in its entirety. It's not as big like the building codes. It's a, it's a smaller book.
And was there anything in looking through it that you felt needed to be tweaked, or it's good to go as it is?
We feel that it's, it's good to go as it is.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't see anything that really needed amended out of that code. It just gives us a little more leverage in some of the stickier parts in dealing with code enforcement that we unfortunately have to deal with from time to time to keep things safe.
Right.
I have a question.
Please.
Mayor, Mr. Jackson, can you give a little bit of background about the weed amendment?
The what amendment?
It looks as though we accepted or deleted out the entire section with regard to weeds. Can you describe that?
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, on the weeds.
Christina Anderson with Community Development. I helped Steve with all of this. The weed section was deleted because the weed section specifically specifies a height limitation. And unless the City of Cottonwood wants to come up with a height where we then draw the line and say, everybody has to have their grass and weeds cut down to this level, then you would have to have that section. And almost all of the surrounding communities have omitted that section. The amendment was to delete out weeds because they felt that that was a little bit too intrusive. So that was why we did that amendment.
Okay, I appreciate that. It sounds like it'd be difficult to enforce, I mean, going around measuring weeds.
Yeah. And like I said, most of the surrounding communities that have the internet and the 2012 version, they did delete that as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Henry, we, when we do have weed issues, we, we use the fire code and the fire marshal to use their judgment about when weeds become a fire hazard.
Excellent, thank you.
And they do have the authority then to enforce?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, very good. Any other questions?
Ready for a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2969.
Second.
Okay, we had Councilmember Norman make the motion, and Councilmember Althouse second. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Althouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Mayor Olinsky.
Yes.
And motion passed.
Okay, so please read Resolution Number 2969 by title only.
Resolution Number 2969, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring that certain document titled International Property Maintenance Code 2012 Edition to be a public record.
Okay, thank you. We kind of took both, both items in, in one fell swoop here, but next up, we just declared it a public record. Next up, Mr. Jackson's ordinance number 652, which is amending Title 15, buildings and construction of the municipal code by deleting Chapter 15.28.010, Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings in its entirety and adding a new section, 15.28.010, International Property Maintenance Code, first reading. So, there's no action on this tonight, and I don't think there's any other discussion up here.
No, and I apologize for going out of order.
No, it's fine, it's just fine. Okay, so then if we could have deputy clerk read ordinance number 652 by title only?
Ordinance Number 652, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 15, buildings and construction of the municipal code by deleting, deleting Chapter 15.28.010, Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings in its entirety and adding a new section, 15.28.010, International Property Maintenance Code. Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, item 3 under new business is presentation, discussion, and possible direction to staff regarding traffic control at 12th Street and Mingus Avenue. And the lights go dim.
Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Winnicky, CN engineer. I have some handouts for you. I'm going to pass these around from Rudy. Okay. Tonight, I have hopefully some resolution out of this meeting so we can finalize the design of Mingus Avenue, so we can move forward to construction after the first of the year. So, when we met last, it was September of last year, so it's been a little while. We had a long duration construction project go on, which is finally done. We've been working on design kind of slow in the background, trying to make sure that all the drainage is working and everything else. Well, we've also been trying to contact residents that live, and businesses that live on this corner where we might need some rideaway. And we have a few issues with the mini roundabout, and that's what I'm here to discuss with you tonight. So, I'll start by moving forward. Basically, this is just a Google Earth aerial image of the intersection itself. You can see north is towards the ceiling, basically. You have House of Ruth on the northwest corner. You have vacant property on both of the east corners of the intersection, then you have a private residence on the southwest corner. And the intersection itself, or the, the roadway is kind of skewed a little bit. Let's see. Oops, that was good. I just forget where the little laser is on here.
The middle button.
Middle button, okay. There we go, or thank you. So, what happens, 12th Street to the north is a little bit skewed from the center line of 12th Street to the south. So, our rideaway actually comes basically right behind the back of sidewalk here. So it makes it a little complicated to go ahead and just say, okay, we're going to use the existing center of the intersection, put a roundabout in, make this work. We have to look at shifting the inters, or the roundabout to the east a little bit. And we've gone through a couple of different renditions of that. This is really hard to see. This is why I gave you the 11 by 17, so it's not much better because it's 11 by 17. But we came back to you originally with three different options. One was to come with this really grandiose sidewalk contraption with some different roundabouts at three different intersections and everything else. That was not really the direction we wanted to go. We wanted to go with something that was more option number two, but to look at some sort of traffic control measure that we can implement at 12th Street to ease ingress egress for 12th Street itself. So, not really what's down here. And again, at the time, this was the mini roundabout kind of concept, just more of a slightly raised, different color center intersection. That way, it's a visual indicator you shouldn't be there, but it was reversible. Okay, we've gone ahead and shifted the roundabout as I kind of alluded to. We moved it to the east, I think it's about five feet, or four feet to the east, of the center line on 12th Street. That works well to fit it, but we have some issues still. And the issues are, we need to get some rideaway from House of Ruth, pretty decent rideaway over here from this private residence. And then the big piece would be on this southeast corner where there is no development today. And then there's vacant land up here, and it's just a very small sliver on the corner there. We've talked to all the different landowners. House of Ruth has had some concerns that we're going to take away all of their parking. Because we have the grade separation, I think there's about five and a half foot from the parking lot level here up to our street. So it's pretty substantial. We'd have to build retaining walls to go ahead and kind of keep everything as close to the back of sidewalk as possible, so that's going to increase our costs there. But the other thing is, is before we moved the roundabout to the east, we were much closer to this parking area, so they couldn't go ahead and make it work. So that was one of their biggest concerns that they had. They liked the idea of having something here that's going to slow traffic down because it would make it easier for pedestrians across the road. But, you know, parking is a big concern. Right now, overflow parking tends to be on this vacant lot on this side of the road, and they don't own that. So it's kind of a, the lady hasn't had an issue with it, but it could become a problem in the future. The resident down here, before we went ahead and moved the roundabout to the east a little bit, this sidewalk was getting probably about three or four foot from the corner of their house. So, not ideal, you know, you're going to have somebody right outside your bedroom window. It's not comfortable, you don't want that. So we tried to move it to the east. We gained a little bit of separation, but still not that much. I think it picked up another two and a half or three feet, so it wasn't advantageous. We'll go over here to the northwest corner. Again, it's vacant land, so that one's not that much of an issue. But the big issue seems to be from the southeast corner. The landowner has basically, I think it's .42 acres roughly for that whole area from the alley, or actually it's from 13th Street back to 12th Street. And they've expressed that they have plans to develop it into some of a higher denser, higher density residential property. And I think we're looking at 1,400 square feet or so of an easement that we would need from them. And, you know, 1,400 square feet based on what they're projecting their units to be, that maybe is a year and a half possible. So, they're running off on some tangents, and, you know, it sounds like that could be a very long battle to go that route. I had the consultant look at, see if there's anything else we can do on 12th Street to maybe offset it a little bit more. The problem is, is to make this kind of curve here, it really became kind of difficult to do. We have to go so far south on 12th Street to start our improvements that we're tearing out a lot of what's already been done in the past. And we're, we're trying not to impact too much further down the neighborhood. So, we have a few pictures just of the intersection itself, kind of looking at each of the corners so you can see what it looks like today. This is the northwest corner, or sorry, northeast corner of the intersection. You can see there's a power pole right behind the sidewalk that would have to be moved with a roundabout, either, whichever location is, it would have to get relocated. That, you know, is an issue, but our franchise agreement covers that with APS, so I think we're okay from that standpoint. Again, here's just another view, kind of looking a little bit up 12th Street, back to the east. And then this is basically just looking straight at that power pole up 12th Street. Then we'll go to the southeast corner. You can see right now it's just vacant land with overgrowth on it. Little bit of a transition where the sidewalk ends today. There will be some drainage, things that have to get taken care of there. If we do a roundabout, it makes longer pipes that we have to go ahead and put under the ground. If we don't, we can utilize trench drain to help pick up some of that roadway drainage. So there's some benefits of not doing a roundabout at this location. And then here's just another view from 12th Street looking to the east. This is the corner there on the southwest where the private residence is. Not a whole lot, you know, it looks like there's a lot of room, but, you know, as I mentioned, that sidewalk starts to really encroach on the corner of the house. If I would have thought about it a little bit better, I'd have shown that corner so you could see really where that laid out. But it really gives you an idea how big this mini roundabout is, even though we're talking about a mini, it still takes up a lot of space.
And just to be clear, these, these folks are opposed to selling the rideaway?
I wouldn't say that they're opposed. They are concerned about how close we would be to the rideaway, or to their house. So, there's probably some, some opposition there, yes.
Because now it's going to be, what, seven and a half to eight foot away?
Yes, from like four or so from what we had before. The other concern- The other concern they had raised is, the gentleman there was concerned that in the middle of the night, somebody might try to go drifting their car through the intersection type of deal. So, you know, that could always be a concern, especially if they hop the curb and end up in their living room or something else. So it is a valid point to go ahead and take under consideration.
But knowing that it's gonna be seven and a half to eight foot away, they are or are not in favor of selling?
I think they're still not. They're still a little hesitant on that.
Okay.
The last one is the House of Ruth corner, excuse me, as I mentioned before. You know, we've got that grade separation there. Parking lot really comes right up back to the back of the sidewalk. The right-of-way line itself is, you know, really just off the back of sidewalk today. So that makes it really challenging to do a lot of extra stuff in this location. Just another view looking to the north, northeast a little bit, and kind of same view there as well. So going back when we originally had the options presented to us, the hybrid approach was probably about a $1.94 million project, which that had a mini roundabout included in the design. The straight-through approach is 1.95, so basically they're kind of pretty much the same. Taking the roundabout out would roughly save us about $100,000. So I've talked to the fire department about it. Originally, they kind of were for the mini roundabout, thought it would be good. Chief's kind of grown a little more reluctant to it over the time as it's gone by, just from the standpoint of he's kind of concerned about having to rob that median on a regular basis and what kind of damage that may have to the trucks and everything else. At this point, I would recommend that we don't proceed any further with the mini roundabout. I think it's too cumbersome to try and fit into the intersection, and we're not gonna get as much of a benefit out of it. Designer's working on a few other options to play with the curb and gutter and sidewalk a little bit to help ease, kind of create some traffic calming there for us, so we can still improve the safety of the intersection. Other than that, it would stay kind of as a two-way stop like it is today. And kind of, well, that's really what we found out with all the analysis we've done on this intersection.
Questions from council?
Toska's first.
Go ahead.
No.
You might ask it, so.
No, I... Mine was more of a comment. I think, you know, keeping it straight the way it is, I would hope, because, you know, I've gotten a lot of grief, I assume everybody's gotten a lot of grief on how long the last phase took, that it would be quicker to, you know, not have to move power poles and not have to do all this other stuff that we could maybe get it done quicker as well.
Yeah, if we don't have to go through all the advanced relocation of utilities and everything else, that does save a lot of time for us. Also, with regards to trying to keep that intersection alive at some point, trying to develop all these curves on curves and everything else will be kind of complicated for construction. So yeah, if we do a normal, you know, just the straight-through, that should help expedite things a little bit more for us.
Great. So I'm on board with the straight-through. If I were that property owner, especially when we have some of our larger vehicles going through there, I think that seven to eight-foot space seems pretty small. But we discussed at the last meeting, addressing the House of Ruth's concern about pedestrian traffic. Do you have any thoughts for, if we do keep it straight-through, how will we address the pedestrian?
The designer's actually still working on that right now for me. He's got some ideas. You know, we could look at the mid-block crossing like we did by the middle school, or actually, Cottonwood Community School now.
I knew what you were talking about.
Yeah, okay, good. We're on the same page then. There's options to do that. We could also look at possibly doing bulb-outs just at the corner itself. Let's see. Yeah, it's gonna be hard to see. But if you go...
He's gonna get the mic.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, real quick. Let's see. Let's do the aerial. Okay, so if we create some kind of bump-outs here at the intersection itself, we can shorten the pedestrian crossing across the roadway itself and also create that visual barrier as you're coming down the road, which you would see that the curb would start coming in on you, the road's getting a little narrower, so it naturally slows you down a little bit. So that's kind of what some of the ideas they're looking at right now for us.
Thank you.
So then, will you bring back a final design on this for our approval?
Yes.
If they are gonna incorporate bulb-outs and additional traffic calming?
Yeah, we'll come back one more time. I just, I want to be able to move forward so we can actually get final plans done. I wanted to report back to you and say, you know, it seemed like it might be something that was gonna work, be very viable. Unfortunately, as we got more into it, the viability really kind of tanked.
I live about half a dozen houses down from that intersection there, so House of Ruth definitely would be impacted. I mean, they use every inch of their parking space on many days. So thank you for understanding the plight that they might be in. And again, I agree with Councilmember Henry, seven feet is not very far when you've got a car twirling at 25 miles an hour or faster down Mingus Avenue. So I appreciate you taking that into consideration and bringing that back to us.
One thing, you know, seven foot, really, if you think about it, it's roughly mirror-to-mirror on the width of your vehicle. That's not much space.
Well, and you have, I mean, we have at least two restaurants on that, on that street, Jerona and Annie's, that you're... So you have Shamrock or Cisco or whoever they're using to deliver food, so you have large trucks using...
Same thing with the mail or the postal service. They have a large one coming through there, and they also have a shorter one, too.
I'm always thinking of food, not mail.
You need to order more packages.
Anything else?
Any questions you have?
From council? No.
I don't know if we gave you clear, but I support the straight-through as well.
I think I got clear enough direction at this point. Thank you.
Well, I'll just, I'll say, just from my point of view, I wasn't real happy with the decision that we made on the overall design. I felt like we should have more traffic calming and, in general, on this stretch of road, and more safety incorporated for pedestrians and, of course, vehicles and bicycles. And I feel like the roundabouts achieved a lot of those goals. And I know it's more expensive. And I know the Cadillac design that we looked at was quite a bit more expensive, but I feel like we really made a mistake with the Sixth Street intersection. I feel that we're gonna be tearing that out before, you know, the next decade to correct that. You know, we had an opportunity to make it right in the beginning, but, you know, for the same reasons that we're discussing tonight, we don't want to impact the property owners, which is a completely valid, you know, reason. But I feel like it also limits, you know, our ability to move traffic safely and, you know, for the overall betterment of the city. So I wish we would still consider the mini roundabout in this location. I do understand where the rest of council's coming from on this, but I respectfully disagree.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. I hope they can incorporate other bulb-outs and other ways to move traffic more safely, because it is busy, and it's getting busier, and it's a major thoroughfare for kids on bikes, kids on foot, you know, folks just trying to traverse the busy corridor of Mingus Avenue. And it's certainly not gonna get any less busy. So I just, again, I don't want to have to be revisiting this intersection, too, in another 10 years and saying, why didn't we, why didn't we do that? So anyway, that's what I have to share. Thanks for your presentation.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, next is possible cancellation of city council meeting scheduled for November 20th, 2018. I believe that we can get all of our work done the first Tuesday of that month and schedule things accordingly. So it's sneaking up on the Thanksgiving holiday. I don't know how the rest of council's schedule's laying out, but I thought we would just poise it for discussion. Do you guys think we should cancel it? Do you want to keep it?
I know that we're very much a working council. I think everybody that is elected on this position wants to fulfill their duties to the citizens of Cottonwood. I also know that we have a couple conflicts right around that date. We've got another council member that has a relative going in for surgery, so they won't be here. It is two days from Thanksgiving, and a lot of people travel, a lot of staff travel. And that's who we keep here. We can't, we don't do this without all the staff as well, so... You know, it really doesn't matter either way to me, but I would be in favor of that just to help staff and take care of those issues. I stay in town, so it doesn't make a difference for me.
Yeah, I'll be here as well, so I have no problem having a meeting. I think, you know, if we have agenda items and we have things that we need to discuss and move on, that's what we were elected to do. We ran, we were elected to serve this. You have to miss a meeting occasionally. I missed last week's work session. I, you know, I don't like canceling meetings because it's near a holiday. I feel it's our duty, but...
Would council be agreeable just to having a longer meeting, the first and second meetings that we have in November, and just planning our workload accordingly so we get the same amount of work done, just in less...
Mayor?
Do we know what would be coming up?
Mayor, Council, I think what's important is that we, that staff have an idea whether we're gonna cancel or not, so we can go ahead and make sure that we move on this and make sure that we try to pack that first council meeting with anything that's urgent. And that's our main concern, is if we want to cancel this, we're probably gonna pack either the meeting before that or the meeting after with things that are crucial. So we just need to be aware of what council wants to do so we can direct staff to make sure that they get their items in early or postpone them, whichever.
And certainly, if anything comes up, I know that we would all make ourselves available. If anything came up, we had to have a meeting that Tuesday.
Aren't we also going to be right around that time making... Yeah, we're gonna be doing final interviews for city manager on the 17th.
Yeah, the Friday and Saturday before.
16th and 17th.
16th and 17th, you're right. It seems that that meeting may be, the 20th, may be an important meeting. I just hate to cancel something for staff to think something's canceled and then for something to come up that, I mean, I think the question is, would we have a quorum if we need to have a meeting? I mean, if there's nothing to have on the agenda, then...
Yeah, I mean, I think if we say we're gonna be here, then we, as a council, will be here. We'll make that commitment. I don't, I don't see, I don't, as long as we can get our work done, you know, the 6th and the 13th, I don't see any reason to meet and just relieve council of crunch time right before the holiday. But again, that's entirely up to council. Unfortunately, we're not a full council right now. These two folks will be on by then, right?
I can go either way.
Mr. Hulse?
I have to be in Kansas on the 22nd for surgery for my son. So I'll be leaving Saturday after the meeting for the interviews.
Got it. Okay. So we have one council member-elect that says he could go either way and another that says he'll be out of town, so... Well, I'll motion then to cancel the scheduled meeting for November 20th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
No.
Councilmember Norman?
I'm not gonna be here, so it doesn't matter, right? Yes?
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And motion passed.
We'll get the notice out to staff to make sure they get it.
Okay. All right. All right, last on the agenda tonight is discussion, consideration, and possible approval of a proposed resolution of the Greater Arizona Mayors Association in support of allowing additional local regulation of short-term rentals. So this has been on Gamma's radar for some time, and Gamma, as it says in the pack, is the Greater Arizona Mayors Association. One of the really fun things about being mayor is that you are suddenly on a lot of different boards you didn't even know existed, so... But I haven't represented council on this. The Gamma basically works to be an advocate for rural communities in what they call Greater Arizona, which is essentially anything outside of the great state of Maricopa, as they say. So it's good organization. It's good to be a member. They do good work there. Also, since I've been on Gamma, we have encouraged the other members of Gamma to allow the nations to be involved as well. So, yeah, Apache Nation Chairwoman Winnicky is a member now, too, of Gamma, which I think is a good step forward for all of us. Anyway, the idea of vacation rentals came up. It's, I think, obviously a bigger issue for Sedona and Page in particular. The mayor of Page is just devastated by short-term rentals. I'm sure all of you have been following it. I just wanted to, before I say, yeah, we'll sign on to this, I just wanted to run it by council to see if you guys have anything to add or any concerns or if you are just flat-out opposed to this proposed resolution.
Mayor, I'm very much supportive of it. I understand that the financial impact, the impact to our residential neighborhoods, the fact that it's transient lodging, the impact to our hotels, motels, and the fact that the city has absolutely no control over it is quite frustrating when you get complaints and really our hands are so completely tied. So if there's some kind of investigation into that that would allow us the option of whether or not to accept it, rather than, it'd be completely out of my hands or our hands, I would definitely support looking into that.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I agree.
I agree as well.
Great. I mean, as you know, the state's kind of really restricted communities from being able to regulate this at all. And it's challenging, you know. The mayor of Page, they've had to turn away teachers that came to teach in their public schools and were lodged up at hotels because they couldn't find a place to rent, because every rental is an Airbnb. And it's just, and the nearest community's 120 miles away, and that's a heck of a commute for a teacher, you know. So they've actually had to turn, you know, teachers have had to leave the community, which is a shame. So they're really suffering, I think, a lot more than we are in Cottonwood, but, you know, for the greater good, I'm all about supporting this. So I just wanted to run it by council. Appreciate your support. And I'll let Gamma.
Do you need a motion, or are you... With the discussion?
I don't know how it's teed up, I think.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. It's teed up as a motion. You can move or you don't have to. The mayor can cast a vote without a council vote.
If you care to make a motion, it'd probably just be a stronger voice of support for Gamma.
Let's do that. Let's document it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to express the city's support for the proposed resolution of the Greater Arizona Mayors Association in support of allowing additional local regulation of short-term slash vacation rentals.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes, thank you.
Next is Claims and Adjustments.
Move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we paid the claims and adjustments. I was kind of hoping to keep us here another hour or so, but unfortunately...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Althouse made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor? What, didn't, what did I say?
Henry.
Sorry, Councilmember Henry made the motion. Are you paying attention? Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.